Okay. Welcome, members of the public. We're welcome to the second MTA Fair and Toll hearing. We did one earlier today, and we're glad to welcome members of the public back, both remotely and in person, to testify. Before we get into all the logistics and the instructions of how we handle these kinds of events, I'm going to first ask that the safety message be broadcast. Thank you.
Your safety is of the foremost importance to the MTA. Therefore, we ask that you listen and adhere to the following instructions. If you witness an emergency, notify emergency personnel in the room and call 911 immediately. Please follow any audible instructions provided through the public address system or visually on screens in the event of an emergency. If an alarm sounds, wait for a public address announcement and follow instructions. If told to go to another floor or to evacuate the building, leave all unessential items behind and use Stairwell A just across the main hallway, or Stairwell B down the hallway, past the elevators. If you have a mobility disability or cannot self-evacuate, please proceed to Stairwell D or E for assistance by MTA staff or emergency personnel. An automated external defibrillator, AED, for use by trained personnel is in the main hallway just past the elevators. If you need assistance during an evacuation, please tell an MTA staff member or emergency personnel, "Thank you and have a safe day."
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Before we get -- I'm going to turn it over in a moment to Lucille for the logistics. I just want to acknowledge that we are -- there are three board members here. Board Member Andrew Albert, Board Member Sharif Solomon. I'm Jan O'Leary, the Chair and CEO of the MTA, joined by Chief Customer Officer Shanee Frierer, Director -- Chief of External Relations, John McCarthy, Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Jay Patel, and MTA General Counsel Paige Graves. We may be joined by other officials as the evening unfolds. With that -- excuse me? Randy Glucksmann are on -- Randy Glucksmann is on, and Sammy, representing Suffolk County, are also on, participating remotely, two other MTA board members. Thank you for that. Lucille.
Good evening. My name is Lucille Songhai from the MTA. I will serve as this evening's hearing officer for this public hearing, the second of four hybrid public hearings, to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to MTA fares affecting transportation on the subways, buses, commuter railroads, the Staten Island Railway, and Essaysa Ride. Today's public hearing will begin with a brief presentation, followed by public comments from speakers in the room and remote via Zoom. As a reminder, only those who register to speak will be able to give public comments. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in 21 print media outlets, including multilingual outlets throughout the region. The MTA also provided notice of the hearings in multiple press releases, on the MTA website, on social media, and on multilingual signs and digital displays in stations, buses, and trains. The MTA's fair hearing website, new.mta.info/2023-fair-hearings, described these proposals in detail. By participating in this hybrid hearing, you're consenting to be recorded. We encourage anyone joining via Zoom or live stream to take a short survey using the QR code or link currently being displayed. This survey helps us understand the effectiveness of our outreach. The link to the survey can also be found in the Q&amp;A section of the Zoom. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on the fare change proposals contained in the hearing notice. Members of the MTA Board of Directors, Agency Presidents, and senior staff are here today to hear comments from the public. MTA subject matter experts will be available to answer your questions about fare change proposals, both in the room and in the Zoom Q&amp;A function. The Q&amp;A function is available only if you are logged into the Zoom webinar online, and it is located on the lower portion of your Zoom window. If you are attending via Zoom online, type your question into the Q&amp;A function. Subject matter experts may answer your questions if it is deemed to pertain to the subject of this hearing. If you are attending in person, you'll recognize our staff members by the name tags they are wearing. Members of the public can also provide comments, ask questions, or make requests on the fair You may also send a letter to MTA Government and Community Relations regarding MTA fare hearings to Broadway, 17th Floor, New York, New York, 10004, or call the public hearing hotline at 646-252-6777. Telephone agents are available from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. I should emphasize that all public comments, including spoken comments today and at other hearings, all correspondence, emails, and phone calls will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record regarding the proposed fare changes and provided to all the board members, so that they can review them prior to final consideration of the fare change proposals. For the record, today's date is Thursday, June 22, 2023. The time is 6:10 p.m. Now, let me briefly describe the procedures for today's hearing. I will call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order in which they registered. The one exception here is that if you have already spoken at a public hearing during this round of hearings, you will be moved to the end of the queue to give registrants who have not spoken at a previous hybrid public hearing the opportunity to speak first. We opened registration for today's hearing on Friday, June 2, 2023, and registration closed at 6:00 p.m. this evening. All participants will be muted upon joining the Zoom webinar. When your name is called, please enable your camera and microphone by clicking the camera and microphone icons on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Please note, there will be a brief transition to allow you to access your video and microphone. We will give you 10 seconds to turn on your camera and microphone before moving on to the next speaker. In the event your name is called and you are not present, we will read your name again at the end of the hearing in the order it was initially called. When you begin your comments, please provide us your name and any affiliation you wish to announce, so that we have it for the record. Speakers must keep their remarks to two minutes or less out of respect for other speakers. The clock on the screen will indicate how much time you have remaining, and visual and auditory cues will remind you that you have 30 seconds left to conclude your remarks. If you run out of time, remember you can always submit complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. American Sign Language and CART captioning are available at this hearing. The public notice for this hearing indicated that language translation services are available, but no request for those services were received by the deadline specified in the notice. To access captioning at the bottom of the screen, select CC, and you will be able to turn on or enlarge the captions based on your preference. You can also view the entire transcript for context if needed. Users will not need to adjust their screens to see ASL. As a reminder, this hearing is being live-casted and recorded, and will be available publicly on our YouTube channel and on our website. Again, by participating in this hybrid hearing, you are consenting to be recorded. I will now turn it over to John McCarthy, MTA's Chief External Relations Officer, and Jay Patel, MTA Deputy CFO, for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Lucille. I just also wanted to introduce the Deputy Chief for Community and Government Relations, Will Schwartz, is here, and he is managing a team that Lucille mentioned in the back and also on the Zoom chat to help you with any of your questions as they arise. I'm going to go through a quick background presentation on why we're here today, and I'm joined by Jay Patel, who will help out. First, you know, as part of that, I want to discuss the role fares play in our budget. It's incredibly important, and we're going to show where our revenue comes from, where it goes, and we're also going to go through the proposals and highlight some of the important promotions and pilots that are part of this fare proposal. But first, let's go back to how we got here. In December of this past year, 2022, our MTA Board adopted a budget that assumed 5.5% fare and toll increases. That would be used and be necessary to balance our budget, which we're required to do, that was brought on by the fiscal cliff. That, of course, is a result of the lower ridership post-COVID. Later in the year, as the year began, the Governor Hochul put forward a budget that dealt with this issue, this fiscal issue, with a balanced, four-pronged approach, which included new revenue sources for the MTA to support riders and get the -- keep the system running at the levels it exists at now. It also involved operational efficiencies at the MTA. We'll go into that later. It also involved a city contribution of funds. And importantly, why we're here today, it also included an assumption of a fare -- a resumption of a fare and toll increase. But thanks to the Governor and the state legislature, there was an additional $65 million added to that budget that averted that higher-than-anticipated, that 5.5% fare and toll increase, and we were able to instead have a 4% fare increase, and that's why we're here today. And also, that budget allocation from the state allows us to go back to the biannual fare increases that we've been doing in the last decade-plus but had stopped doing during COVID, and we'll go into why that's so important for stability and predictability. But first, as I said, we're going to go into how -- where our budget dollars come from and where they go, and Jay's going to take that.
Thanks, John. So a quick overview of the sources of revenue and how our $19 billion operating budget is spent. Fair box revenue represents about 27% of total revenue today. That's down from almost a 40%. That was at pre-pandemic levels. On the right side, operating costs include employee salaries and health benefits, which account for 60% of our operating costs. And then there's the piece for nonlabor, which includes fuel, power, maintenance, and professional service contracts. And then the third piece of how the budget is spent is the transportation revenue bonds, which support the system's much-needed capital investments and improvements. These costs increase over time, and modest recurring fare increases help offset portions of these costs. John, I'll turn it back over to you for the history of fare increases.
Thanks. So what this slide is showing, and for folks who can't see this slide, it's a bar graph showing years going back to the early '80s of the percent increase in fare and tolls at the MTA. It's important in illustrating how if you ignore or do not raise fares over a period of time, you're then forced to raise it at a higher percentage. If you're looking at this, you'll see that over the course of a good 13 years, there was no fare hike, and then all of a sudden, the customers hit with a 25% fare increase. It's dramatic, and it has a high impact. So what happened in 2010, then Lieutenant Governor and former MTA Chair Richard Ravitch was in charge of a study that looked into the best way to go about dealing with the need for fare hikes and how that can be put in place in a way that doesn't have more than a higher impact than needed on the customer. And they -- the decision then was to make low -- lower fares increases, but at a greater frequency, and that's what we're returning to today. It has, as I said, less impact on our customers, and it's more predictable. But while we are also looking at these fare increases, we keep in -- keep on mind the need to keep the system affordable. We heard earlier today at our first session about the importance of affordability. A couple of things that we want to go through here is, it's incredibly important for this agency to always keep in mind, keeping our expenses low, looking at ways to cut costs, and that's why the Governor and the legislature put in place the -- in our budget, a $100 million efficiencies to be realized this year and 400 million in years going forward. We're always looking at that, and we're all -- always look to achieve that and go beyond. The other thing is tackling what -- there's another issue that comes up frequently is fare evasion and toll evasion and its impact on the tolls and fares that our customers pay, our customers who are paying using their harder money. What impact do the evaders have on that? Chair Leiber put together a panel last year, a blue-ribbon panel, that had experts from across various civic areas, and they reported out very recently on this. It was very thoughtful, well-received, and we -- I would ask that people take a look at that if they can, but it goes into what we're going to do, what we need to do to cut back on fare evasion, because that money is lost and is -- impacts what we might have to do on the fare increase side. We looked at design of the fare area, the affordability of the system, enforcement and how that can be done in the right way, and education for customers and why it is so important to have a fare and to pay your fare. The other area that we want to stress to folks, because this has come up over and over again, is on the affordability, is the availability of fare fares. That's a half-price fare for customers. It is available. We work very hard, along with the city, to promote this and make sure anyone who's eligible for this benefit understands how they can get it and how they can use it. There are discussions about increasing this and making it available for more people, and we're watching that very closely, but we ask people, anybody who has any questions on that front, to speak to us, and we will help them out. Jay's going to now go through how we got to the specific numbers and the work we did with our board members in getting there. Go ahead.
Thanks. So our approach for the 2023 fare increase started back in December, when the MTA began working with several board members, some of whom are with us today, to develop a fare package that focuses it on three different priorities. One was increasing the fare to help balance the 23 budget, as well as future years, allocating increases with an eye towards equity. We looked at a lot of market research for that, and looking at customer behavior to responsibly prioritize our frequent customers. And the result of that was sort of what we're presenting today for the fare hearing. It's a sort of -- I wanted to walk you through what our permanent fare increase proposal is today. Recapping, it's a 4% increase across all the different fare products that we have. The proposals vary by ticket type, but overall, they yield a 4% revenue increase. Some of the quick highlights on the fare proposal is that the base fare on the subways and buses would increase by 15 cents. The seven-day pass would increase by $1, and the 30-day pass would increase by $5. On the railroads, the proposal is to increase up to 4.5% for monthly and weekly tickets. So when discussing permanent changes that we're doing today, it also brings up an opportunity for us to introduce and review promotions and pilots that are in place or that we can actually start, as we continue to build off the legacy of offering fare products that take advantage of existing capacity and delivering equity. With those goals in mind, we're introducing some new pilots. We're offering a -- the customers a seven-day rolling fare capping on Omni. Currently today, it's a static seven-day, Monday through Sunday, Lucky 13, as we call it. Now customers can take advantage of it and start using fare capping at any day of the week, so you can start on a Tuesday and end on a Monday, if that's your traveling pattern. We're also expanding the city ticket to weekday peak periods for $7, while maintaining the off-peak $5 city ticket fare. We're also launching a new pilot on the far Rockaway ticket, and we're going to continue to maintain the deep discounts on our monthly railroad tickets. They average between 40 and 50%. This helps keep rail access very affordable, fare products in communities that don't have access or enjoy the same subway service that New York City Transit does on the subways and buses. John, you want to?
Yeah, thanks, Jay. So I think we're ready to start again. We have both online and in person, so if you haven't signed up and you're out there online, please do, and two minutes to speak, and we, again, are available in the room and on the chat function to answer questions. So Lucille, back over to you.
Thank you, John and Jay. We will now move to the public comment portion of today's public hearing. I will call out our first public speaker of the night. When your name is called, if you are participating via Zoom, there will be a brief transition to allow you to turn on your camera and unmute your camera microphone. Our first speaker this evening is Lisa Daglian, followed by Mr. X.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lisa Daglian, Executive Director of the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAIC. No one likes to pay more, but thanks to Governor Hochul and the state legislature recognizing transit for the essential service it is, we're talking about a lower 4% increase. We'll also see service increase on subway lines where there's been off-peak growth, which is great. Because of their bold action, the MTA is looking at steady seas and prevailing winds for the coming years, instead of the fiscal tsunami that threatened riders and the entire region. Supporting the system with smaller planned increases is critical to keeping it sound financially and running reliable service to show for it. Safe, frequent, affordable, and reliable service is important to attracting people to transit, critical to our ongoing recovery. Improvements funded with congestion pricing money will make for a smoother ride. More creative and flexible fare offerings will further encourage ridership. To that end, we appreciate city ticket expansion to include peak travel and support rolling Atlantic Ticket into it. We urge you to keep the option of buying a weekly ticket that allows transfers to and from subways and buses, and adding it to e-ticket so more people can take advantage of the program. We support changing the Omni weekly fare capping to a rolling seven-day period, along with the introduction of a monthly fare capping pilot. We support raising eligibility to fare fares to 200% of the federal poverty level and expanding it to commuter railways in New York City with increased city funding. We also support increasing outreach and lowering barriers to applying to encourage more people to enroll. Fare fares can and should be fairer. We support capping the cost of monthly ticket fares for commuters living in the farthest -- living the farthest from New York City at $500. We support the 4.5% increase on weekly and monthly tickets that would still be at a lower cost than pre-pandemic prices because of the 10% discount implemented last year. We support capping any ticket increase greater than 6% at a maximum increase of 50 cents per trip, and we support the MTA's efforts to find savings from efficiencies and inviting payment evasion.
Please conclude your remarks.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. X, followed by Spencer Bruce.
To the MTA employees, when you make a presentation at public hearings, you need to shorten your speeches. If you make a long speech, you may put any of us to sleep. We don't want you to put us to sleep, especially if you're not telling us a bedtime story. Fair and toll prices, why are we discussing this? The Governor, who could pass for one half of Laverne and Shirley, bailed you out yesteryear and this year. So to the MTA head who could pass for Harrison Ford and David Lim with a big nose and a smaller head, why are we discussing fare and toll increase prices when she bailed you out in both years, not to mention passed too late budgets? She bailed you out, but you have to increase the fare and toll prices. You decide to hold them this month, thus decide our fate next month, which is something to rush into marriage, which is what your predecessors did. I find that disturbing. Okay? You shouldn't ask us to foot the bill. Instead, you should ask Paul McCartney to fit -- foot it. He could supply the money and the marijuana. There's a case you want to hit. Ask him to bail you out. Okay? I don't feel the fare and toll should be increased, but I feel if the night the base fare has to be increased, why not just increase it to $3, rather than increase it to 3.05 this year, $2.90 this year, and then increase it to 3.05 years from now? Why not just increase it to $3? Just where everything runs smooth, we'll have a smooth operator like Shaw Day. Because what you're doing is confusing, annoying, disturbing, and confusing. You're getting on my nerves with it.
Please conclude your remarks.
And to the MTA head, I'm surprised you're here.
Our next speaker is Spencer Bruce, followed by David Kupferberg.
Hi. Thank you all for being here and for giving us a chance to provide feedback on the work you're doing and have planned. I think there is room to grow on making transit riders feel that their fare make I think there is room to grow on making transit riders feel that their fare makes a difference, especially during fare hikes, and not just for subsidizing the ridership on the air train for those who opted to drive to JFK. It would be valuable to know that My Fare helps you build a more accessible and efficient transit network where one doesn't need to go uptown 60 blocks to switch from an uptown to a downtown platform by elevator, where monthly fare capping is brought to all riders and where buses aren't blocked by NYPD on the few miles of protected bus lanes we have built. This is especially true when fares increase. As much as I think toll and fare evasion are important topics, I think there's still a need to address riders' lack of trust in the MTA to not only deliver on promises made but in a timely and cost-efficient manner. When the MTA has been publicly decrying fare evasion for over 60 years and considering the lengthy rollout for your new turnstiles, some alternative experimentation may be warranted. A transit agency that is dishonest or fails to deliver is one that riders opt out of or aren't willing to pay for, which seems to be the opposite of your goal given the reliance on ridership for revenue. People want to see less weekend outages, wait times less than 25 minutes, and efficient means of getting where they need to go, and I think they'd be willing to pay for it. Considering the estimated loss in revenue due to fare evasion is by far largest on buses, why can't we board from the back door on all local buses? Other cities have found negligible increases in evasion, given the increase in service speeds, safety, and in turn ridership when switching to all-door boarding. Why do we need nine different student Metro cards that don't function on weekends? Shouldn't children, and all youth for that matter, be free to move about the city out of school, given a lack of gainful employment? What about the nearly half of all residents eligible for fare fares who aren't enrolled, or the hundreds of thousands that could be eligible if the income limit were adjusted accordingly for the cost of living in the city? Lastly, I would like to see much more research done into how much time, energy, and money could be saved or redirected if we opted for free transit instead of spinning the wheels on the same issues year after year. It's often dismissed without consideration, but other cities have made this choice, and I believe it's worth the time to think about making these solutions alongside fare hikes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Kupferberg, followed by Preston Low.
David Kupferberg, Vice President of Bus Advocacy NYC Passengers United. New York City already has the highest base fare in the USA and, except for Washington, DC, already has the highest pass prices in the USA. But we are lucky that New York City has by far the largest mass transit network per capita in the USA. Many cities in the USA, large and small, are redesigning their bus networks. The goal: significantly decrease passenger travel time. Unfortunately, bus lanes cannot and will not expand to the point that it would significantly decrease passenger travel time. The result is that NYC has and will continue to have, in the near, medium, and long term, the slowest average bus speed in the country and slowest average traffic speed in the country. Neither increasing bus service haphazardly nor bus stop balancing would resolve the dilemma. And based on my analyses, 95% of the bus stops in New York City are good exactly where they are. Therefore, different methods have to be used in order to significantly decrease passenger travel time. Brooklyn, for example, has a dense core network of bus services that people have trusted for decades, though service gaps remain. Therefore, there should be four objectives: close service gaps, expand bus service to transit deserts, do both without negatively impacting the core network, and increase bus field dispatches in New York City tenfold, from 40 to 400. I cannot and will not support a fare and toll increase until the MTA and New York City DOT wants to significantly decrease passenger travel time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Preston Low, followed by Adrian Horzak.
Hello, I'm Preston Low, and I would like to say that increasing the fare from $2.75 to $2.90 is not a great idea. I say this because, as a New Yorker, we take public transport for granted. I understand that y'all lost millions, 20% of it from fare evaders, but the MetroCard can't be the only way to get funds from. Other ways to fund public transportation is by sales tax, general revenues, development fees, and additional funds from the federal government. Most of the times, police ignore fare evaders, or they're unaware of the situation. Why? Because they're on their phones. Also, increasing the fare will not help people living on minimum wage. A lot of the stations are still dirty. They are not in commission as often. I don't see the benefit from raising the fare. Now, said by John Delrus, I also want the fare for air train to be lowered, or better yet, make it free, especially for exiting the fare gate. The current 825 is ridiculous. My final message: if service and safety does not improve, raising the fare will serve no purpose. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adrian Horzak, followed by Christopher Greif. Adrian Horzak is our next speaker.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Adrian Horchak. I am a subway rider, and I am against increasing the fare. Think about it from my perspective. The fare is going to increase, but is the service going to be any better? It's going to be, I'm going to be paying the more for the same kind of bad service. And a lot of people that take the train are poor, so they're going to have a hard time affording the higher fare. So this fare should stay the same for the subway, and there's other ways to raise more money for the MTA if it's necessary. It doesn't have to be off the poorest people in the city. And a great example of another strategy is to get the state legislature to approve for higher vehicle surcharge increase. For now, it's $2.75, just like the subway. So it can be increased to help pay for the MTA rather than increase the subway fares. The for-higher-vehicle riders tend to be wealthier because they can afford a taxi fare, but subway riders don't have that money. So you should keep the fare the way it is, especially since the service, if the service is not getting better.
Our next speaker is Christopher Greif, followed by Deborah Greif.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Christopher D. Greif, and I hope everyone's doing well. I'm here to support one thing. The guarding the $60 weekly for the Atlantic ticket needs to stay because my fellow other hat that I represent for people with disabilities, for the other boroughs to Brooklyn, to Queens, for the Advisory Council, we need those staffs who use the Bernard Fine Sensor at Queens Village uses that weekly. So if we got to keep it, I don't care if we call it the city weekly or monthly week, whatever we want to call it, but it needs to stay where it is. And if we're going to do any fare increase, can we please make sure that any proposal you're putting in to show the reduced fare price, so low-income people who have Social Security, disability, SSI, the same way, so they can know how they can let Social Security know what the changes prices are? I said this every year, and I know Edith Prentice said it, and I'm still going to say it when any fare changes. It would be easier for any low-income families from today and then. And second, if we are going to be doing any changes on the railroad, please make sure that information is available, not just digital, but on station information where the ambassadors are for the railroads, so therefore they can help them, encourage them how much the share of the prices are. Digital does work, but remember, not everyone can see the digital. Remember, we have all types of disabilities in New York. We need to be fair and help them out of all courses. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Greif, followed by Gregory Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Greif, and tonight I'm here as the Chairperson of the Brooklyn Families Port Service Advisory Council. What my son Christopher said about the Atlantic ticket, we need that to stay because, as he said, we have not just only the people who go to Bernard's Fine Sensor to work, we have what's called direct care support staff that go to different homes to help families who have children with disabilities who need to be watched, because even though they may be physically, say, 35, they have a comprehensive age of 10, and you can't leave them home alone because they don't understand. So by having it kept at that level would be a major help. Also, I wish the MTA would run fare fares, because at least I know you'd run it better because you would remember that persons who have lower income, who use accessory, should get the same thing once we turn 65. I could have gone on fare fares, but I said, what, for two months? And then boom, I'm back up at $2.75? Forget it, I'll stay at $2.75. Yes, it is very hard for a person in my financial situation to budget, but I do make sure, because why you doing the weekly, the monthly? That made it a lot easier because then I could tell right away. What Chris said before, please advertise if you're going to go up higher, please let us know in the reduced fare categories where we are. Also, yes, I would love for you to run the air train, because you know what? I think you would at least let us, people with disabilities and who are ultimately lower income, go on for half fare. The Port Authority seems not to understand, so we should everybody get it right. The Port Authority runs those trains, not the MTA. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gregory Thomas, followed by David Feliciano.
My name is Gregory Thomas. I'm just asking the MTA to help me. I ran up a big toll bill. I'm disabled from ground zero. Everything from my stomach up is chronic. I have the lungs of an 80-year-old man. I'm 60 years old, two heart attacks. I just got a new job, starting Monday, at JFK, but they're taking my car from me because I haven't paid the tolls. I can't re-register my vehicle. I'm only asking for help. I don't want to shit home. I don't want to watch soap operas. I don't want to do none of that. I just want to get to work. I made numerous phone calls to MTA, and no one can help me, so that's why I'm here tonight. I just need help on a payment plan. You will get your money. I just need my vehicle to get to work. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Garland Robert, excuse me, David Feliciano, followed by Gary Prophet.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David. Today in this meeting, I'm discussing that, you know, these old decades of public transportation, I'm going to evaluate, but I'm not going to enter this discussion of negativity outside. So my discussion is that what's happening with station agents, what's happening in public safety, what's happening, all these going on with crime around in my birthplace and my hometown. But we've seen these things. The last time I was here, the station agents removed outside. And I'm thinking about, I don't, that's what I say, on the back, I don't agree with you guys. Guys should be, guys should be ashamed. Guys shouldn't have done this like a long time ago, over the old years, especially that you have homeless sitting down like public transportation, and then police attack, and then nativity action going on. This is really disgusting. Bro, I've been in public transportation for a long time, and why the hell these retrofit the 20th century, and you have 21st century kids? I'm not just talking about your skin, I'm not talking about your skin, I'm just being for real. Like, you guys telling the Democrats remove that reform? This is disgusting. And now I'm seeing these decades right now, I'm seeing doing drugs and on the ground, or getting beat up, or getting attacked by a police officer and disrespectful. I ain't going to stitch. But I will say this, this isn't about fare and also fare evasion.
Please conclude your remarks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Garland Roberts, followed by Gary Prophet.
My name is Garland Roberts. I'm a retired engineer, former Assistant Secretary of Defense under George Herbert Welche Bush, and I'm mad as Hades. Unfortunately, I was originally in Brooklyn, and the testimony will stand for Connie Lessell because I was involved with my godmother, Anna Marie Blynn, in many innovations in the MTA. But one of the main things I have to put, because of the two-minute thing, is I have a major problem with people that have died in the Bronx on account of B-35 and the redistricting of the bus stops. I was fortunate when the man from London was here, I had been in London, I was able to get to him. I had tried to get to you people about the cars that were being left because I was involved with Robert Kennedy on Georgia's Bank, if you know what I'm talking about, I'm an Antucketer as well. And we wanted those trains because we had done it in the past, but it seems that there's some scrapper that's getting money or paying off people. I have not been able to get with Hochul, I have not been able to get with the new representative. My problem is that I'm a person that on three different occasions, I had to put tourniquets on people that had legs cut off because the personnel from the transit were afraid to deal in the situation. They have no training on any type of tourniquets or anything else. I have been involved in many incidents in this situation. Number two also is that the situation is you cannot get rid of cards, and the main thing is people, handicapped and other people, like I said, on this B-35 stop at Simpson, we have to do something on it because we're going to go into a court suit on it. And also, you have a problem with these temporary cards, because when you come in here and try to get them straight, they tell you you only had one week. And a lot of handicapped people are complaining about it. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Prophet, followed by Dewey Donahue. Gary Prophet.
Yes, hello.
Hi, please begin.
I'm Gary Prophet, the President of the Empire State Passengers Association, where a statewide organization to improve rail and public transit throughout the state of New York. Ridership on Metro North and the Long Island Railroad have gradually been increasing over the last year. Currently, it's about 70% of the pre-COVID ridership. Now is not the time to raise fares and stop that gradual increase toward getting the riders back. We need to wait till the ridership continues to grow a little bit more, and everyone that comes into the office will continue to come into the office. Raising fares at this point will just discourage that. Also, cap the Metro North and Long Island fares at 500 is a good idea, but too high. We would recommend a cap at about $4.25 or $4.50. A lot of congestion on Long Island and Westchester Counties by people driving, for example, from Poughkeepsie down to Croton or Terrytown and parking, just so they can save a few dollars on the fare, and in essence, they're occupying the same seat on the same train, just getting on the train later. Also, we need to eliminate the reverse peak fares, for example, from Grand Central to White Plains in the morning. This was a money grab that was done many years ago and should have never occurred in the first place and was done during a period of soaring ridership. Now it is ridiculous for peak fares for reverse commuters. It simply discourages passengers on those routes. Also, stop all MTA subway and bus fare increases until congestion pricing begins, as by increasing fares this fall, it'll drive some commuters to use their cars for commuting into Manhattan just before congestion pricing has the goal of reducing cars from Manhattan. At least try to coordinate these activities so we're giving a consistent message. Also, safety and fairness need to be job one on the subways. With hundreds of millions of dollars in fare evasion, which is over 50% at some subway stations and some bus routes, this must be brought under control before anybody should consider raising the bus or subway fare. Also, crime must be reduced on the subway and the platforms to bring some people back. Some people will just not come back.
Please conclude your remarks.
Regardless of the price of the fares, just because of safety. Thank you.
Our last registered speaker is Dewey Donahue.
Buddy, my concern here is that they're increasing the subway and the bus cost. Oh, did I not start yet? Okay. They're increasing the cost of the subway and the bus, and they keep doing this. I remember it wasn't very long ago they increased it to $2.75. Now they keep increasing it to make me pay more money. But you see on the chart, so much of the money is going towards these debt services. But you see on the chart, so much of the money is going towards these debt services to make a bunch of somebody's friends in Wall Street very rich. And I have to pay so much money, but they can't, you know, ask for a little bit less out of you, you poor guys. And maybe you should be getting it from somewhere else, not from me and not from them where you wind up giving them back 100 times what I give you. I also have something, my friend who wasn't able to be here today, Diane Sayer, who I have a T-shirt for. The proposal to raise the fares on the MTA subways and buses is another assault on the poor and working-class New Yorkers by the friends of Jeffrey Epstein, none other, on Wall Street, who you guys are paying as your third highest cost of operation for debt services. The friends of Jeffrey Epstein, who is a famous pedophile. As Lyndon LaRouche said decades ago, "Public transportation ought to be free of charge." The benefit to the city is that allows New Yorkers to be more productive by enabling them to get to work home and safely and efficiently. The subways are neither safe nor efficient, but the U.S. Congress has decided it's more important to bail out billionaires, banks, and fund dangerous wars in Ukraine and elsewhere than to maintain our infrastructure and support the people working at home to make our country worth living in. Don't raise the fares, lower the fares, don't give us these congestion pricing. And instead, the federal government can afford to maintain our transportation if they wish.
Please conclude your remarks.
All right.
Thank you. We have three more speakers who are registered remotely. Our next speaker is Celso Garcia, followed by Cassie Rafucci. Celso Garcia.
Hello, how's everyone doing today? Just wanted to make a few important remarks that the fare and everything else should not be on the backs of employees. And if the fares increase, I have a lot of family and small children that ride the system with, and the employees are doing the best they can every day, and they should be respected. Also, retirees should not be allowed to lose their healthcare as far as employees, and fare evasion should be stopped. You should not penalize the honest person. The honest person is being penalized for working hard. Buses are packed, bus lanes are blocked. Safety is a big issue for employees and customers. And $700 million on Omni, but people just walk past it. And basically, I have small children and family that ride the buses and they see a lot of crazy things going on. For examples, all types of dogs, baby carriages blocking the aisles, there's no rules, basically, and people vaping, using electronic cigarettes on the, on the train and on the buses, smoking, all types of stuff that are considered quality of life issues, but could discourage people from wanting to ride the trains and buses. I think the transit rules should be enforced and the rulebook should be used to help anyone and to make sure that the system is running the way it should be running. Another observation that from family is that the trains are not as clean as they used to be or the buses, they're not being kept up today.
Please conclude your remarks.
So what I'm saying.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassie Rafucci, followed by Crystal Enneful. Cassie Rafucci.
Good evening, good evening, MTA Board and Chairman Lieber. My name is Cassie Rafucci and I'm a member of Passengers United. I would like to, I would like to deny this fair hearing. My reasoning for saying this is I feel that individuals with disabilities and seniors and people who have low income should not be in this, in this fare hike proposal that you guys are proposing to do. And also, in regards to the express bus fare hearing, I mean, the express bus fare, I don't think, I feel as a member of Passengers United that it should be raised to $7 because I have a friend who travels via express bus and does not, and who has a developmental disability. And I feel that my friend should not travel via, my friend should not travel via express bus and have to pay $7 twice a week to travel to work twice a week and all that. Thank you, thank you for my, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Crystal Enneful, followed by Lydia Streiter. Crystal Enneful is our next speaker.
Hi, good evening. I disagree with the fare hike because obviously I'm a commuter and I think it's very, I think it's very absurd actually to increase the fares as the trains are very unsafe. It causes everyone that I know that takes the train or the bus anxiety. Since the last fare hike, there has not been much improvement with MTA at all. This gotten dirtier, it's gotten more unsafe. People are being pushed into the tracks. And the last thing that we want to think about other than our safety is paying more money to take the train. And we don't even know if we're going to get to our destination on time, if we're going to get to our destination safely, if we're going to make it home. Like, it's just very ridiculous to just decide that we should be paying more money to get to work. And we can't even get to work on time because buses are taking long to pick us up. Sometimes you're waiting 20 minutes and the bus is not even in service. It's really ridiculous. And the number one thing you should be worried about is safety. And if we cannot ride bus or MTA and train safely, we should not be having to worry about paying more money for it. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, if you believe you have registered for tonight's hearing, but you have not heard your name called, please either speak to a member of our staff here in the room or indicate so in the Zoom Q and A. Our next speaker is Lydia Streiter. Lydia Streiter is our next speaker. Lydia Streiter, please unmute yourself. We can hear you. Please start.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk about something that is very upsetting. It is the fare evasion on the buses. It's possible that it improved on the subways. I'm not sure about that, but on the buses, it's gotten much, much worse. And I don't know why I have to pay a fare increase to pay for everyone else who doesn't pay at all and chooses to get onto the back of the bus and not pay anything, especially because we have fare fares for low-income people. Some people don't want to pay anything and they just brazenly go onto the back of the bus. Some of them even go on through the front of the bus and just walk right past the driver and don't, don't scan the fare or put anything in. And this is very upsetting because you're putting all the responsibility onto the honest people to pay now for an increase to cover the people who aren't paying anything. And I feel that, I noticed that the problem has gotten worse and worse and not better. And it's people of all ages. It's not just like school kids who go on for free anyway. We're talking about all ages. And this is really very, what can I say, unjust. They need somebody to monitor the back of the buses, the doors, so people aren't getting on for free. That's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is.
Lucille, before we, just can we make sure that that last speaker gets a link to our report so she's made aware of the efforts we're putting in place to tackle fare evasion?
Absolutely. Our next speaker is Vincent Jenkins. You can begin.
Hello, hello. Hi, everyone. Good evening to all of you guys here at the MTA and the MTA Board. I would like to say about the change in fare increase and the proposal, it's very concerning. You know, it's not much, it's 4%, but you know, for those reduced fare tickets, it only changes it a little bit. But in the New York subway system, you know, it really needs to be cleaned. And I have asthma. And so it's, I also have COPD. And you know, that air down there is really lousy. But you know, we need to change and, you know, keep it running and keep it clean inside those, those subways. It's very dirty. It needs to be cleaned and maintained. And so when this, you know, fare is changed and increased, then you need to give us something back for that and, you know, be able to clean the system. So thank you so much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clifton Smith.
Oh, yeah. Good, good evening. Well, I am Clifton Smith and I live in, we're there in the Bronx, so I, yes, well, I've been, I've been traveling, I've been traveling for like eight and a half years. I've been traveling for like 18 and a half years and a half years. So I'm out of school and I work in, and now my job, I work in, my job is in Yarkers. So here's what the things I do. I, I, I agree on that because the, I, like, I've been, like, I agree, waiting for, waiting for the next bus is 20 minutes is not good. So I had to walk from train station to home, which is not bad. And then I pay, always pay monthly on the MetroCard, which is, there wasn't not, not so bad. So what I heard about the MTA, they keep increasing the fare without, without reducing. So they, so, and the only one thing, so, the only one thing is that they need to, they need to increase select nine bus and put the timer on it so that way I don't have to wait for the, for the button, wait for the next one to come. So, and the only one day, they need to increase to 21 bus. That's all I have to say. They go have a good night.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Charlton D'Souza.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Charlton D'Souza, President of Passengers United. And this ticket right here, the Atlantic ticket, has been a lifesaver for Queens residents. For $60, you can ride anywhere within Southeast Queens to Brooklyn and you get a 7-day unlimited MetroCard. This is so important for Southeast Queens residents. And I implore and I beg all of you, please extend this to Grand Central and Penn Station. And everyone should be able to benefit from this. And I also think this should also be for Metro, Metro North as well. It should be either a $50 ticket, make it cheap, make it affordable and inviting. And that is how you win people back to take mass transit, when you have discounts and when you offer discounts. And also what I would say is the subway service is so bad that the fare should just be kept at 275. However, overnight, a third transfer should be included. And this was actually brought up today by someone who I spoke with. With all these bus redesigns going on and with subway service being so unreliable, you need a special third transfer so people can get on an emergency bus or train if the system breaks down. And I just want to say to this board and to the chairman, you've got to keep the $60 or the $50 Freedom Ticket extended to Penn Station and Grand Central. And please, you know, with the Long Island Railroad first, make it 375 for the off-peak LIAO fare, make it $5 for the peak fare. That is fair, that will invite people to use mass transit, especially with congestion pricing being implemented now. If you want to win over Southeast Queens commuters and Northeast Queens commuters in Vicky Palladino's district, you're going to have to do the right thing, guys. This was also included in state legislation.
Please conclude your remarks.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to advise the board members that in addition to testimony we're receiving in person and via Zoom, we've also received about 125 people who have used the written option to produce their testimony and we'll make sure that's circulated to all the board members. That remains open so folks can continue to, to use that option as well. Thanks.
Thank you. We are now going to take a five-minute break. And just as a reminder, if you believe you have registered for tonight's hearing but have not heard your name called, please either speak to a member of the staff in the room or indicate so in the Zoom Q and A function. Again, we will be taking a five-minute break. Thank you. Again, we will be taking a five-minute break. Thank you.